So.
I think that should be saved.
Yeah. Oh, but of course, I love, always want to talk to her.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and meet the mics and start everything back there.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. I figured, well, she must be on vacation or something. It was last week.
Sweet.
Yeah.
You know, I wonder if my, Keisha was on vacation and sometimes my stuff rolls over to her.
I'm sorry.
I said, "Keisha was on vacation all last week."
Yeah.
I don't know if it was on, went to her line or not, but I didn't get any. That's weird.
I can't remember. And I think it had to do with the work session topic. And I was, but I can't remember the question now.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. All right, I'd like to call this work session, this June work session, to order for the Louisa County Planning Commission. We will begin with our old business, which is a discussion on shelters. Mr. Coon, whenever you're ready, sir.
I don't know if you or Mr. Goodman would like to share some of the updates that staff and y'all have been working on? And then I can get into the specifics.
I'll defer to Mr. Goodman if he prefers to do that.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I was just telling someone, I have spent more time on this issue than anything since I've been on the planning commission, except the comprehensive plan. Put a lot of thought into it. I was hearing from a lot of quarters that where we started several months ago was a no. And this thing has morphed and changed over time with, I think, the right people being involved. I've met with the, some of the interested parties out in the citizenry. And I'm not saying that it won't morph again before we bring it up for an actual public hearing. But I think it is a very, very good draft to work with tonight. I would draw everybody's attention, we met this week, as a matter of fact, on Tuesday. And you'll see a lot of line in and line out from that meeting where we further relaxed things that we didn't think were necessary or we didn't want to enforce directly. So I am very comfortable with us having discussion on this tonight. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and staff for all of your work on this and for the people who have come forth and given us their input on it. I think we have been in a compromising mood from the beginning, trying to check as many of everybody's box as we can without jeopardizing what we're trying to do, which is define two types of shelters in the county as staff requested. Hope that is accurate and useful, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. And I would like to thank you as well, Commissioner Goodman, for the, just the, all the effort of research and time and work with county staff as well in producing the background for all of this so that we can have something that addresses the needs of the county, I think, as well as the needs of those who would want to implement these shelters. I will note, Mr. Coon, that since we need to resolve both types of shelter, I only see the definition for one shelter here tonight. Before we move forward to public hearing, we'll need to have the other one as well so we can move both of them forward. So.
I do have a draft definition. So I know yourself and Mr. Goodman have provided a definition. I provide an alternative definition and the county attorney has been in review of that. And we can discuss that item now or we can go through the humanitarian shelter item and we can bring that one up later.
Let's start here then and we'll get to that one after we finish here.
The, so the emergency shelter?
The humanitarian shelter.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, so as you all see, what was provided in your agenda packet was a draft of this, which included a draft definition, which was homeless shelter after review. That has been updated to humanitarian shelter. And then the other item is, it does say, a facility that provides temporary shelter and basic services to individuals or families. And it was requested to strike out experiencing homelessness and then just said, "without requiring lease or occupancy agreements." So that would be the draft definition. We would add a new definition of humanitarian shelter to the zoning code. And is there any questions about that? Can we move on to the other item?
Any questions?
I'm good.
Please move on.
So that, yes, the next item, and just bear with us, this is a little conceptual. What we tried to do here is create an ordinance or information that would be included in the zoning code that would require certain items. So the intent is if an applicant is coming to get a conditional use permit for this type of use, we wanted to be upfront with, this is the things that you need to provide for an application for CUP that would be helpful. And then that's where these items would go. So the first one would be that this would be an ancillary use requirement. As you know, we do have, in the zoning code, is by right and then permitted secondary uses or CUP. We probably add something on the back end of the appropriate zoning that we're gonna require CUP for this to have a CUP ancillary or secondary uses. So we may do it that way instead of have it like this. But the intent is that a shelter would be permitted as an ancillary or accessory use. The daycare, childcare center facility, we originally said that they should be separate, but that was stricken. For item three, continuous supervision, the intent here was that if the applicant is gonna file, they would show, number one, how they were gonna be supervised, so with the hours of operation. If the individuals are gonna be trained, how they're gonna be trained. And then, like we said, it would be a requirement or expectation that these supervised individuals would be there during all hours of operation. For item four, just like we were talking about, the intake and screening requirements, what they intend to do and what all that includes, the hours, the protocols, the verification or identification, screening policies, assessing suitability, the written policy stating if they're gonna do background checks or what they're going to do that may or may not disqualify someone entry. So basically, it's just a whole narrative of what they plan on doing for their intake and screening requirements. We contemplated having a facility layout, so on the exterior of the building, if there's gonna be controlled access points in and out of the building, if there's gonna be exterior cameras or lit parking lots or something like that. That was decided to be struck for now. On-site services and partnerships, this is something just to show that they've reached out to the community and tried to identify other organizations or partnerships that could render some type of aid, just dealing with vulnerable populations, making sure they have additional services they can provide. We discussed adding parking, circulation and access to the facilities, just dealing with traffic and all that, but that was something that, that didn't feel was necessary. The next item was the community impact and service burden statement. One of these items is trying to make sure that in the CUP, if they're gonna do this use, that it's not going to overburden the county. And you can see one update that we made on the second bullet, it says, "They need to provide a narrative to show how the shelter will minimize or offset reliance on county or public services." Of course, public services could be rendered by state agencies as well as the county. Then we also have on here the good neighbor policy, which is something that ultimately provides a point of contact, basically 24/7. Whenever the operations of the shelter are going on, there's someone that, you know, community members or surrounding members of the community could reach out to. And then we had the review and enforcement as well as the regulatory compliance. Those are two regulatory items that basically say, in addition to all of these expectations for CUP application that depended on a case-by-case basis, of course, the board could put additional conditions on any application that came forward. And then the regulatory compliance, we wanted to make sure that all the different standards were laid out, that, just making sure they are aware that all of these requirements and whether it's the legislative or regulatory entities that have to abide by.
Before we go to a particular item here to be discussed, I just wanted to ask, does anyone have any questions in general about the policy that's been produced or anything you'd like to discuss?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cursey.
If you all could enlighten us, the items that were stricken as conditions, the discussion that led to those being stricken would be of interest.
Certainly, Commissioner Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess the, the first thing stricken and added would be in the draft definition. We did not want to restrict community assistance to just homelessness. We wanted to include hunger, adverse weather, power outages. Anytime that there was something out there and they felt a need to provide assistance, they could do that. Beyond just, whether you're talking a soup kitchen or a free meal for an overnight, a bed to stay out of the weather, and homeless was a little bit restrictive. So that's the reason we changed throughout the document the reference to homeless. On item two, it was too restrictive. It said it will, shall not be located on a parcel that has daycare, preschool or other. That was stricken because different applicants will have different facilities. And it's entirely possible that they can have a homeless facility, excuse me, a humanitarian, I knew I would slip tonight, an humanitarian facility that is completely separate from where they're having the schools. And if they have got the proper procedures in place, and it could be that the humanitarian shelter is not in use when the children are there. But if it is, they've got to be able to show us that there's a separation, but it's not a requirement. That's the reason that was stricken. Any questions about that one? Layout and security requirements. It was presumed throughout this that we were talking about a, an existing facility being used. And if it was existing, the layout really didn't tell us anything since we don't have minimum requirements for a layout anywhere and neither does the state. So if they want to use an existing facility, whether it's a home or a civic organization's meeting place or a church or what have you, the presumption is it's already in place. If it's not in place, a new construction is gonna go through the building process and the county will have the layout for it and we'll be able to ask the appropriate question. So that was a burden that we wanted to separate. All of these, I think, and then go through and look at the last stricken section, all of these is to make it less cumbersome and to get rid of information that we really don't want to get into with anyone who's providing this assistance. And it's the same, same with parking. If it's an existing facility, they're already dealing with parking and circulation and that sort of thing. If they're gonna come in to build a new facility, they're gonna have to go through the building process and we have standards for parking and that sort of stuff. If it's an existing facility, these people are making a decision that their parking will handle it. We're okay with that. Again, all of this that was stricken is to make this less cumbersome. Check a few more boxes, if you will. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you, I do appreciate that.
You're certainly welcome, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other questions in general?
Mr. Chairman, I have.
Mr. Dickerson, please.
So if my neighbor's house burns down and Karen and I want to let them come stay with us in Airhouse, does this affect that at all, that type of humanitarian shelter in a private residence?
I wouldn't see why, because the use would still be, you're using a residential home for a guest to stay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could I pose the question that, and I agree where this is moved to and I literally just refreshed myself last night on the old ones. So it kind of, it challenges me to not look at these in my notes. But this is great, I really appreciate the efforts. I just a couple of questions. Number five, I guess the question, is any type of emergencies that would come in conflict at a humanitarian shelter? How would that be handled, just by the trained staff member as? I guess my question is, if we take, if we take away, which I agree with it being moved, I just, it poses the question in my mind, facility layout and security requirements. So should something come up where, where the, back to number three, a trained staff member under continuous supervision? What would, I guess the policy would reflect that, that if medical aid or anything like that was needed rendering, that they would just call the 911? That would be the protocol?
And, Mr. Chair, the reason the word "trained" is highlighted
I was gonna come to that.
is because it, we did not come to a consensus on that. And we thought it best to put it before the commission to discuss whether or not we want to require training and that sort of thing.
But before we get there, I want to make sure we exhaust the other.
Well, I know, I just, when you refer to train people, that's not.
No, no, that was one of the changes.
It's not decided, it's up for discussion.
It was neither added nor deleted, it was highlighted so that we could discuss it. But we did want to get to all of your other comments before we move there.
Well, actually, Commissioner Goodman answered most of my notes. Even the ones on my old list, you kind of, you took care of all of them, so thank you.
Good job.
Hey, glad to be of service.
So then, unless there are any other comments, that moves us back to item three, continuous supervision. The phrasing that was originally written is what's here, a trained staff member. The question was raised during the meeting yesterday whether we wanted to require training or we wanted to leave that to the organization. And I think, I raised the question initially, the reason I raised it was partly because I'm not aware of everything that goes on in the world, so I apologize for that. But I was unable to come up with, where would you go to get trained? What would a training program look like? What would be your qualification under that training program? Just to understand before we create a requirement, is there a requirement that could be met? There were opinions in the meeting that there are programs out there and I'll turn it over to Mr. Coon to identify programs that he has that can clarify things.
So, of course, when we say training, it's a wide range of examples. This, of course, would be up to the organizations applying for the CUP. They could provide, these are the trainings that we're interested in giving our staff. Just some of the ones right off the top, of course, it's American Red Cross CPR first aid training. But getting into more specifics about the shelter fundamentals, Virginia Department of Health actually has a shelter fundamental training. It's basic shelter operations in the Commonwealth, which includes roles, coordination, as well as some infection prevention. They've also got the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. They've got a couple trainings that deal with some types of vulnerable populations who have or could have some behavioral health complications. Virginia Department of Health has, there's environmental shelter training as well, which just covers sanitation, hygiene, food safety and other shelter-like environmental standards that are, you know, kind of the requirements if you're gonna do this in the state of Virginia. They also have, sorry, some of my notes are splitting pages. There's some shelter, like, they have shelter, like, tabletop simulations with Virginia Department of Health, which is kind of simulation-based, like role-playing, getting people up to speed with different types of scenarios that they could see. And then, of course, there's some national ones as well, National Association of County and City Health Officials that provide training for, it's like a public health readiness, which help education and just prevent some of the items that may come up. But there's a laundry list of different items that would qualify in some type of shelter organization or dealing with vulnerable populations. Those are just a couple ones I found right off the websites that I think would be beneficial. But ultimately, this would be something that I think the applicant would provide as these are the types of trainings that we are proposing that our staff get and kind of go from there. Just more information for you guys to make the decision about recommending approval or denial of a CUP.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Goodman.
I'll start the discussion off. I was against the word "trained," I wanted to eliminate it and just say a staff member would be present. And I had rationale for that. Number one is cumbersome to go through training. We've already been through that with fire departments and rescue squads and we've lost people because of minimum training requirements. Number two, it starts us down a rabbit hole. We're also gonna require background checks and all that other stuff that comes up when you start checking on individuals who are providing assistance. And the last reason, there's two more, one kind of pings off the other one. The Good Samaritan law is already covered in the statute of Virginia. So if you are earnestly providing assistance to another individual, you are covered under state's Good Samaritan law unless you are grossly negligent in what you are trying to do. And because of that, that state coverage, I think training requirements is best left to the entity and their insurance company and not the county. We just say it as a staff member, that staff member is covered by the state under Good Samaritan. If your insurance company requires some minimum training or whatever, then, and certainly if you want to get training, in addition to what Mr. Coon's mentioned, I'm sure local fire and rescue would come by and have a session with you to talk about training. And usually fire will give you a courtesy inspection of your facility and point out things. So I think, I don't think we need the word in there. I personally don't want the word in there for the reasons I just stated, so. Anyway, that's, I'll start the conversation off there. And it was a good discussion on Tuesday. There were a couple of face-to-faces and maybe a couple of white knuckles, but it was all, it was healthy. It was healthy conversation. Put it on the table and let's beat on this thing for a while. And this was one that we just said, okay, let's stop, bring it to the commission, discuss it.
Right. I'm gonna throw it open to others from what they've heard. Otherwise, I'll step in with my opinion as well. Mr. Painting, yes.
I guess it goes to question, and again, I like the way it's been changed. I like this new draft more than the old one, for sure. But it's going to make me use the word homeless shelter. And I guess that my question would be maybe posed more to staff. What is the homeless entity in Louisa?
Depends on what services are being provided.
I mean, trying to separate from where this originally started at.
I'm sorry, can you say that question?
From where this originally started at, with it being a cold weather or homeless shelter?
Emergency shelter.
It was emergency shelter. And then we'll get to the emergency shelter, updating that definition. So, then we just knew we had to separate emergency shelter. Because with Virginia code, it's not the right terminology to use. So, then we wanted to update it. And then, just like Commissioner Goodwin had mentioned, the reason why homeless has been removed for humanitarian is that if someone got a CUP, an entity, organization, whatever, received a CUP for this, they would be able to provide the temporary sheltering and basic services, really to anybody that needed those services. So, that's why we removed the homeless piece of it, is because it actually is more inclusive. So, if people needed help or their power went out and, you know, something happened that they needed to use one of these facilities, it would actually open it to a little bit broader than just those experiencing homelessness. So, that's why we switched the definition and removed experiencing homelessness.
Yes, sir. I understand that. Thank you for your response. I guess my question still draws back to my lack of knowledge. Is there a homeless issue in Louisa County?
There are certainly individuals who, the best way to phrase it, I think, is there are individuals that are homeless in Louisa County. And the scale at which assistance needs to be provided is, I guess, what's in flux right now. Some individuals want us to go at it 100 miles an hour. Some individuals want to take the approach that we've got now. And this is basically an attempt to try and thread the needle between the two and offer some solutions without being too cumbersome.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
So, I was, I guess I was asking for comments on, but I appreciate the comment, though, Mr. Painting. Was asking for comments on trained, whether anyone had a strong opinion one way or the other. That's all right, on trained, as we try to hammer out whether we want to keep that in there.
Not a strong opinion, but thank you, Mr. Chair. Trained is kind of wide, isn't it? Because I can train you and I can brief you or train you. Brief is a word that we recognize. You can be briefed in a minute. So, I mean, is it germane to a specific training? And otherwise, is there something that, I know that you say, well, okay, well, you could, they could allow them to be trained, but to what degree? So, I mean, that's just my.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dickerson.
I guess at the moment, I could go with Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Goodwin, and remove the word "trained." Because in the past month, I've been dealing with insurance companies and their regulations. And they're much more stringent than what I've seen counties do on some other issues. The insurance companies seem to be dominating the regulatory world right now. But that's just my two cents.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And following on, Mr. Quarles. I originally asked the question in the meeting we had on Tuesday about the word "trained," because as I said earlier, I was, it was unclear to me if there was any training class, anything that could be used, any formal method, or what were we actually requiring at the time. I'm not as strong on removing that as I was, but I'm acceptable to remove it. If we leave it in, it does appear to be a requirement at that point. And it's not left up to the, to the shelter operators, the way I read the language, whether they would not have to train a staff member. They would have to train them somehow. Some training would have to be provided. But it's unclear what the training is. And it could be something, they train them on their own procedures is all it would have to be. I don't know. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Coon.
So, I just want to make sure, this says a trained staff member or authorized representative. So, if it's an authorized representative, let's say if it was an organization that wanted to provide a representative that spoke for them, they could still be on site and it doesn't require any training. This would be if it was a staff member that they had. That's why it was one or the other.
Okay.
So, it's a small distinction, but it does allow for both opportunities.
I appreciate that. I appreciate understanding that. Because as I read it, it was unclear to me whether trained went with staff member or authorized representative or trained staff member or authorized representative.
I'm sure we may have to do some legal changes if we keep it in there, but, yes, sir.
So, I would think an authorized representative of the organization and staff member of the organization may well be the same kind of thing anyway. And so, I, I don't know. I'm not strongly either way right now myself. But if you, if you say it's a trained staff member, then the staff member's going to have to be trained by someone, by some method, to some requirement. And, you know, I guess it would be left up to the organization. But I don't, and all that training may be is, I guess, here's the keys, here's the phone book with the numbers we call. Here's the, I have no idea.
There's the exit door.
Following up with what you said, Mr. Quarles. I mean, that's, at times, I've been in those at work, too. And that's more of a, I had it, you got it.
Yep.
And you're on your way on the shift. So, I don't know. And I mean, not to make light of it, I just, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion either way.
So, is the recommendation, then, just to strike trained member or to be a, oh, I guess, and authorized representative?
I would just say, a staff member or authorized representative.
Well, the only reason I would prefer authorized representative is because a staff member would assume that it was an employee.
A staff member or authorized representative, yeah. Unless, does anyone feel strongly about the word "trained"?
Is it necessary to have both, staff member and authorized representative? Could we not just go with authorized representative? Because a staff member is going to be authorized representative, I would assume. So, why have both?
I agree.
I'm okay with that as well.
I mean, either one of them is fine. I think it's kind of redundant.
So, then it'll read and authorized representative.
Right.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dickerson.
I just had an idea, which is sometimes scary. But instead of having trained staff member or authorized representative, how about identified authorized representative? Because sometimes you go into a room, everybody's dressed the same, you don't know who's in charge. Who is that representative?
I don't know if the county is that concerned about the operation inside.
Other than having a point of contact with, Mr. Chair, other than having a point of contact, which is identified in the other paragraph. So, if something goes, there's at least a push button to contact somebody.
And that person may not be on site, where the authorized representative is on site. Law enforcement or EMS or social services.
Correct, because the Good Neighbor Policy does identify a primary contact for community inquiries or complaints. So, they may actually be two different people.
So, you're going to have to bring the name badge.
Yeah. It just gets confusing in organizations, who's in charge?
Move on first.
I'm all right with an identified authorized individual, representative, I mean. Is that all right with everyone?
I'm sorry, I did not catch the language.
An identified authorized representative.
Why not that?
I'm okay with that.
Are there any other comments on the humanitarian shelter as presented and modified? All right. Mr. Coon.
As long as the conversation's done, I just wanted to make sure Patricia and I have looked at this. And there's a couple items, like I mentioned before, that how we indicated it, what's before you today. There may be other locations in the zoning code that may be more adequate to place it. So, for example, item one, maybe place in a different section. So, I just want to make sure you guys are aware, the format that you're looking at today, it may be different. The intent will be the same, it's just where it goes in the ordinance. It'll still be on one page, but the locations may be a little bit different than what's presented today. And some of the language, we've had some conversations about things that need to be tightened up a little bit in verifying they're providing this information to us. It's not necessarily a requirement. So, just some of those things that we've been discussing that I want to make sure you guys are aware of, that the intent will be there, but it will more than likely look a little bit different if we're ready to move forward.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, this will be a C in every box in the matrix, correct?
Not every box.
That was where I was going next. To make sure we talked about the matrix table, because we want the matrix table to go with it as well.
Give me one second, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, good. I felt like we got chewed on enough last night. I likened it to an episode of Gotta Smack. We don't want them here.
Something to remember for our public.
Never seen anything like it. These are going to be this information in love.
The boxes that it would be is transferring most of the same thing that's already existing for emergency shelter. So, we discussed the A2, in and out of a growth area, would require a CUP. And then, in the A1, A1 in a growth area, R1, R2, in or out of a growth area, it would be a prohibited use. So, they'd have to try and get a special exception from the board supervisors for that. In C1, C2, IND, and I1, it would require a conditional use permit. And then, we also had included that it would require a CUP for those items in the growth area, which right now, it's by right, but we proposed that it require a conditional use permit in those districts as well. So, essentially, it would be a, require a CUP in anything higher than a C1 and lower than I2, and it would not include an RD. And then, it would also be a CUP in the A2, in A2 growth area. So, it's pretty similar to what we've got now. It's just there's three growth areas, it's allowed by right, that we would just shift that to require a CUP as well.
Mr. Goodwin. I see a further.
I need to see it further. R1 and R2 are not prohibitive?
Yes. They are now. Was going to say that way.
Mr. Chair, I don't know that I agree with that. I can think of residential development that during the CUP process, I would be against. But I could take the same zoning and look at it that is zone residential, and I would not be against. And I, and I think the CUP process, rather than prohibitive and make it an exemption, would bring out any concerns we have. And I'll just, I'll be straight up in a tight subdivision. I'm not sure that I, I want that to go through a CUP so I can consider that. Because we've got R1 and R2 that are in subdivisions, not in subdivisions, large parcels. And it'll all come out in the wash during the CUP process. I don't, I guess I don't see why we wouldn't just go through and say, you want to have one of these, you need a CUP.
Well, okay, so, to begin, just so I'm clarifying to me that you got the picture. Nowhere is it proposed to be by right.
Correct.
Okay, good, yeah.
Correct, but we have, we have several zonings in the matrix right now where it is prohibitive and you have to go through an exemption. And I'm saying, I'm not sure we need to do that. If they have to do a CUP, it's like any other zoning. Because we got some, we got some mixed uses in some of the same zonings in this county. And the CUP will draw that out as to, do we want it in this type of a neighborhood or not?
I can think of some churches that I haven't checked the zoning, but I believe they're in residential zoning that may want to apply for a program like this. And if they did, then I'm not saying that particular area, the particular church would be a problem to have a use like this. And certainly, go through the process would be the thing to do.
CUP will bring that out and we, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go, no, go right ahead.
Well, CUP process will bring it out, rather than the message and the process of saying, no, you can't. You got to go in for an exemption. I just make everybody a CUP.
And just point of clarification, right now, as of today, we're looking at this as emergency shelter.
Right.
Which this is part of the whole update, but this is what's required today.
Right. And what you told us is emergency shelter. But what we're talking about in front of us is humanitarian shelter.
Well, yeah, so, if you use the current code, emergency shelter there is what we're talking about, right? Because when we fix all of this, emergency shelter is going to be something else.
What we're talking about right now.
Right.
Yeah.
So, the conversation just is, do we want to include it in other districts other than the ones we see here? Because the thought process was the ones that we see here requiring a CUP would stay. And then, those three that allow it by right in the growth area would also require a CUP.
Go ahead. Mr. Quarles.
I don't see the problem with Commissioner Goodwin's idea of bringing it all through a CUP. And it's, it's, it's a step, but when you have situations, like you said, in and out of these areas, I mean, yeah, let's, let's, does it, does it create that much more work? I don't think so. And I guess that would be the biggest nuisance. You know, I don't, I guess you look at it as a broad brush, but you, you try not to. I don't think there's going to be an influx that we're going to be overwhelmed with these CUPs and regret the fact that we brought them all under the CUP umbrella.
Mr. Chair. Before, Mr. Dickerson, did you have a comment you wish to make or?
Upon reflection, I'm thinking back, as you said, there are several facilities in some of those zoning classes with X's where a facility may work great. So, I think they ought to have the opportunity to apply for that. So, I think they ought to have the opportunity to apply for that CUP and compete for it.
Yeah. And going hand in hand with all this being said, I mean, I can think of some churches that probably fall into some of that zoning. I don't want to restrict any church's ability to say, I want to participate.
Or any organization or entity.
Or any other organization, absolutely. So, Mr. Goodwin, did you have anything further?
No. I, well, I was going to, I was going to say, what was I going to say? I was agreeing with what Commissioner Quarles said. On a, the only person, the only entity that it affects is us. Staff still has to work up all the paperwork for an exemption, and the board still has to hear it and vote on it. We're the only ones that are going to have to get involved if it's a CUP as opposed to an exemption.
Yeah, if it's an exemption, we'd...
And also, to add that, if they don't want to do the exemption and do a rezoning, then it's just a rezoning and a CUP.
Mr. Painting, don't let me forget you, because he...
No, no.
Mr. Brooks isn't here tonight, and it's heavily loaded this way.
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm certainly in agreement with expanding it across the board, CUPs, and let everyone come forward if they wish to, and we'll deal with it. Can we propose that, Mr. Coon?
Would we want to include that in resort development, or?
I'd hate to leave anyone, anyone out.
I think we're opening ourselves up to be in question. I'll just throw, I don't even know if it's zoned that way, but Shenandoah Crossing, if they wanted to help the people in the community, then why would you say, no, you can't do that? Everybody else can, but Shenandoah Crossings can't. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Resort development's a little different, with the master plan requirements and things like that, it's much more process that's going to be required anyway. So, that's just something, we can include it, but they're still going to have to do a whole lot more legwork to try and get one of these uses approved, just because of that master plan on the back end. But, just putting that out there.
I'm good with that.
Thank you. Yes. So, Mr. Coon, that brings us now, then, I think, to the question of the emergency shelter definition, so we can go ahead and take that up, and then, I'd be interested in having a vote on moving this forward, public hearing in July. If you can have anything further, but go ahead and get it all wrapped up.
So, what we had was a definition that was proposed, John and George had worked on, and there's a couple items that Patricia and I were reviewing. And then, one thing did come out that was important to just make a distinction, is, so, the emergency shelter is actually dealt with in a different section of the state code, it's basically based on operations and not necessarily the zoning code. So, it's not a requirement to be defined, because it's something that has other rules and stipulations in the state code and other items that address it, address the regulations, address the operation, how it's approved, who it's submitted to, all that is already done and established elsewhere. So, it's not something that necessarily Louisa County needs to define in the land use and say, who can and can't do it, because it's already stipulated elsewhere. However, for clarification, if you guys wanted to put it, we would suggest simplifying the definition that was proposed and referencing the state code section that authorizes that use and the operations of it, and then, allow by right use in any district, just so this way, it doesn't hinder the county's response in emergency, so that if something happens and operations need to pivot or do something different, just depending on what the scenario is, that there's no hindrance in the zoning code, that our code enforcement doesn't have the authority to enforce anyway, but we still don't want to be in violation of the zoning code. So, it's just one of those, we could repeal the emergency shelter definition, because it's not going to be a land use item, it's an operation item, or we could amend it, and then, just do a much simpler version that talks, it still talks about the emergency operation plan, providing temporary shelter, and then, the emergency shelter must comply with the Virginia Emergency Services and Disaster Law, which is the one Supervisor Goodwin, I'm sorry, Commissioner Goodwin, has been discussing.
Not yet, not over.
So, it's just one of those, it's either or.
I thank you, Mr. Coon, for that clarification as well. I think potentially, it'd be better to simply repeal emergency shelter. Nobody's going to come in here and attempt to build one, I don't think, just from out of the blue, it's something that's handled differently. I don't know how anyone else feels, but Mr. Goodwin.
I absolutely agree. This one was really squeaky in the beginning, clean. It was, it had spelled out in the Code of Virginia. This is what it is, in certain situation, here's who calls it, it's either state of emergency or a local emergency, that's it. Governor calls one, local government calls the other, nobody else, I don't care which zone is, can use an emergency shelter. It's in, not use, but establish one. So, I don't see why we need it. And as far as putting it in the matrix, it's any port in a storm, if it's a state of emergency or a local emergency.
Just...
Mr. Coon. Mr. Quarles, Mr. Coon.
I was just going to say, point of clarification, if we repeal the definition, we'd also remove it from the matrix, just so that there's no questions about it. Yes, sir.
Very good.
So, then, we will update the humanitarian shelter item and include the zoning districts as discussed, and then, we'll move forward with repealing the emergency shelter definition.
Very good. So, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chair, I move that we place these two items of discussion on the agenda for our July meeting for a public hearing, one being the establishment of the definition for humanitarian shelter, along with any qualifying information that we have discussed and decided on tonight, the other being to vacate the definition of emergency shelter and its inclusion in the zoning reference matrix. Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second that I won't repeat, but essentially, moves forward the definition of humanitarian shelter to a public hearing in July with the removal of emergency shelter definition and the attached matrix table entry.
Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Painting?
Yes.
Mr. Disisway?
Yes.
Mr. Dickerson?
Yes.
Ms. Quarles?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Kersey?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you all.
I want to thank everybody for their involvement and serious consideration of this. I think we've come a long way since we started three or four months with this.
Absolutely. Yeah, and thank you for your leadership as well, Commissioner Goodwin, thank you, Mr. Coon, for the staff work on this, very much appreciated.
Yes, sir.
And, let's see, I don't believe we have any other new business, except for one And that has to do with comprehensive plan. So, the comprehensive plan update is coming upon us. I went back and I looked at the minutes of the planning commission meeting back through November last year, and I was unable to identify a set of minutes where we officially appointed anyone to work with staff on the comprehensive plan update.
I will check. My recollection was in January, it was Commissioner Dickerson and Commissioner Goodwin were going to continue serving in that role.
I think we discussed it, but I'm not sure it showed up in the minutes. I looked for that, but I don't, I don't know if Ms. Johnson has those handy.
I'm looking around.
Okay.
Well, that's something, we can also reaffirm it during regular session, if you're...
Sure. I wanted to clarify it, because I want to make sure we get that recorded, so it's not a question of whether or not we have people assigned to work on this, that we do, because it'd be good to get busy, I know this is upon us now.
Correct. Just to provide an update from staff, we've been working on different surveys to get out to members of the public on different facets of the comprehensive plan. So, it'd be one overarching survey, which would be relatively large, but we also want to make sure we chunk it into bite-sized pieces that can focus on areas that individuals may be more passionate about, instead of doing the whole thing. And we also plan on having the town hall meetings going around. Tentative plan right now is one in every district. The plan is to get the surveys done by the end of June, and start doing the surveys sometime in July and August. Main reason for that is, we don't want to have town halls when people are on vacation, so, we'll wait until everybody comes back and school's back in session before we start having town halls. So, that's kind of the tentative plan right now. So, we're getting there, it's just once staff kind of has some of those surveys pretty close to being done, then we can have some, you know, real meat and potatoes to discuss from the members of, for planning commission, as well as the board, making sure any questions or items are addressed.
So, Mr. Chair, this will be reviewed by the commission and the board before it's sent out.
Yes, that's, so, the survey, we plan on getting to a point where we're ready to discuss, discuss it with those entities, and then, shortly after that, we can, of course, send it to the whole board for consideration as well.
Okay, good.
Very well. And, Mr. Coon, one other thing, since we have a few minutes in the work session, can you...
You to turn me my minutes up, but you...
We, I'm going to give you an hour tonight, Mr. Goodwin. Anyhow, since we have just a couple of minutes, can you, we made a recommendation, and maybe this is better during the regular meeting, but I'll ask it now, I can ask it again then. We made a recommendation during the regular meeting in May, in order to commission a study of land, and the board has looked at that. Has the board produced any response to that?
As of right now, it's an item for consideration. What other localities have done around us? They call it build-out analysis, essentially, taking a look at the parcels, what we have left, what the requirements are, and what the build-out would be. And the item, it's kind of up for discussion, is that other localities, it's taken upwards of two years to get a full build-out analysis done. So, in the sense of, if we were to move forward with one now, in the process of doing a comp plan update, which normally, there's some zoning code amendments that happen as well, in conjunction with that, we may want to wait till those changes occur before we then look to obtain that build-out, just because it could drastically change the build-out analysis if, you know, one or two changes happen. So, that's why, just when we're looking at the amount of legwork and costs associated with it, we may want to do it after the changes occur.
Very good. Thank you.
One quick thing, we have another item that is all business, and we haven't been able to find the time to move forward on it very much. We've talked about it several times, but really haven't thrown a lot of stuff against the wall and see what sticks, and that's gateways. And I would recommend that you and the commission consider rolling that into the comp plan effort, to see if we can get that moving forward as we work on the comp plan. Just as we're doing focus areas within those focus areas, we'll talk about gateways, and that way, we'll have at least something, a board to dive off of into the pool to get into what's going to go on.
I agree wholeheartedly. My understanding was, we were going to do gateways in the original comp plan, and it never finished.
I was going to say, it's several years' discussion, and we just haven't gotten, and I think this is a perfect opportunity to get some traction on it.
I think it is.
We'll have the linkage to the board, since they're working on it, so...
Mr. Goodwin?
Some beneficial items...
Patricia will tell me if it's illegal.
Say, some beneficial items is, in some of the surveys, we actually already have some questions, I think it's like three or four questions that are centered around some gateway items, you know, setback requirements, and different things when you come into the different, we didn't necessarily call them gateways, just, you know, but that's what they're for.
I think, I think we can call them gateways, and go ahead and roll these things together and get some, get some traction.
I think we should. Very good. Thank you. And now, does anyone else have any other business for the work session? Very well, then, we'll conclude the work session and reconvene at seven o'clock for regular meeting.